All right, we'll call the meeting to order eight fifteen. Do we have any liquor licenses, Jackie?
Yeah. Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes as received and being there's no liquor renewals or license or renewals, approve the agenda as stands.
I will second the motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. No visitors other than Julie Lyons and Larry Hurst. You guys are up.
All right, we'll start with a quick update.
Thank you.
On COVID-19, numbers for the week. Oh, this is not a final draft.
That's, that is a smooth rap, final draft, but there's some editing down at the bottom we have to do, just an admin work at the bottom we had to do.
Okay, uh, so you can see on our reporting tool that we are sharing this week's totals and then we are also adding on the previous week totals, so you can see how we're trending in Mills County. As of today, we, in a one-week period, we have ten new cases. Last week, we had twenty, so that's a downward trend. We're happy to see that. Total confirmed positive cases is one twenty-seven, number of recovered cases is eighty-four, total number of individual tests to date are three thousand seventy-three. That fourteen-day positivity rate, again, tho- those numbers are very important because they are gonna help us determine how schools can stay open and how long-term care facilities can further reopen and go to phase three. So last week, we had eight point three, this week, we had seven point eight, a downward trend, which is good. In regards to numbers, you will see this week, uh, the, uh, the, let's see.
Eighteen, eight twenty-five versus eight twenty-five and nine-one.
Yeah, so one thing that I'm looking at, Larry, is that our numbers are slightly off here. So we'll have to look at those again. We have one extra case. So I think that one that's sixty-one to eighty should be zero. The vast majority of our cases are seventeen to twenty-three-year-olds. We have a high infection rate amongst that age group. So those are, those are the numbers for your review. We'll make a couple of quick corrections.
Is it pretty typical across the state right now, eighteen to twenty-three is at the high?
You will see in Governor Reynolds' last press conference that she did on the twenty-seventh. So she spoke to six counties in particular and put extra mitigation in place, so bars and restaurants, and if you notice those counties, those are college-town counties. And so it is very hard to mitigate infection control in college towns in bars. And so she took that extra step and closed those down, Black Hawk, Dallas, Johnson Lynn, Polk and Story Counties. She also used stronger language in the most recent proclamation dated on the twenty-seventh in regards to face masks. She added, consistent with recommendations from the Iowa Department of Public Health and the Iowa Board of Medicine, "And to assist in reducing the spread of COVID-19, I strongly encourage all Iowans, two or older, to wear a mask or other face covering when in public settings, especially in circumstances when it is not possible to maintain six feet away from others outside their household unless it is unsafe to do because of their health or disability." That's the strongest language that she's put out in a, in a proclamation. So I think that that's great advice and we're sharing that with our community. I did just wanna briefly update you on some public health activities that are taking place right now. It's fall, there's a lot of large gathering and events that are being planned in our community. We have been working very closely with the school district and the city administrators planning around these fall event, fall events. Last Tuesday, Larry and I met with the city council to talk about homecoming. From a public health perspective, we think it's ill-advised. Anytime you get a large gathering of people in close con- if, if you've been to Glenwood Homecoming, you know that it's shoulder-to-shoulder, close contact for extended periods of time. We do recommend that those sort of activities are ill-advised. The city council has decided to have an additional meeting tonight. They're gonna hold it at the amphitheater.
Well, it's at the amphitheater.
Well, it's just being impossible.
Larger crowd.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, public health guidance is sort of twofold. A, we don't recommend it, it's ill-advised. It's, it's, no matter how wonderful of a plan you have in place, it's virtually impossible to police once the event is underway. Second course of action is if that, if the city decides that they are gonna proceed with homecoming, then public health would somewhat switch gears and work with them to help mitigate and have those good plans in play. One thing that we would like to bring to everyone's attention is the governor has been very consistent about her recommendations for vulnerable adults. So very specifically, we would like event planners to send very targeted messages to those populations. If you're sixty-five, if you have underlying health conditions, we would specifically like you not to attend because it's very high risk and maybe they can put some things in place so they can live-stream it, have it on radio, whatever it is. We also have just very specific plans. We'd like to see social distancing before, during, and after the event. We'd like to somehow limit attendance, modify the layout, be very mindful of physical barriers, traffic flow, staggering times when people will gather, for instance, when you're picking your kiddo up off the, that, that's a, a real big gathering. So just, we, we have some things that I'm gonna stop over and talk to Angie with after this meeting as far as mitigation and trying to put at least best practices into play and do what we can should they decide to go that route. Any questions or concerns about homecoming?
Yeah, they, they do have a, they, they had a meeting last Friday and, uh, the police department, and Devin got there and we were unable to attend, so basically Chief Johansson called me after, during the meeting and asked some questions, stuff like that. And they did a one-page, uh, that they're going to present tonight, and basically they're advocating the parade route on Vine Street from Forest Street South to the ballfields down here, which is kinda unusual, uh, 'cause one reason why they had to shorten it up because they're going to have the kids walk in certain age groups, it was long distance, if they tried to use Locust Street or something like that. Being around the square, which everybody wants around square, is the mass gathering piece. Get into that where the other issue is, though coming down Vine Street, you're still gonna have everybody kinda crowded up along the sidewalks either side to whatever this parade may look like. I think there's varying opinions, you know, not, not only from the community, but also from Devon's old faculty, you know, about the utility of having this and what their role to play. There's even mention in here that they would try and mitigate by, um, some volunteers from the school district to pass out masks. People didn't have masks or encouraged them to wear their masks. Of course, I'm kinda questioning where they're gonna, what's the source of these masks? Where are they getting these masks before they're gonna hang out, hand out? So, uh, those are things probably talked about tonight, and there would need to be more probably planning in this to make this work. But there is a second topic that came up last week, and this has to do with the dance. It was voted down, three-two vote, city council, last week. This actually was voted down also by city council, but then at the end, they said, "We didn't get a real presentation. We want the planning committee to give us something so we can really make an honest decision here," uh, you know, educated decision. So they gave the parade committee a chance to go back and relook at this, and that's what this is about tonight. But the dance basically was turned down because it's, it's hard to control that. And although they had a decent plan, uh, from what I saw, uh, for containment, you know, rules and, but it's just based on the public health crisis we're in, it just won't work. Now, the rumor going around social media is it's moving somewhere else, and, uh, that's gonna be a worse situation, probably, and that's actually going to go against the governor's proclamation, her guidance, and actually, yeah, it's gonna probably break the law and they could get cited. So it's, it's an issue that needs to be probably looked at real hard if it does come, come to, uh, to reality that happens, like, like, some people are saying, and all we can do is just advise that.
How, how would you be breaking the law?
Uh, the gatherings, social media.
Well, so the most recent proclamation that the governor put out is you can have a mass gathering, it is allowed, but it is required, the event organizer must ensure at least six feet of physical distance between each group or individual attending alone. So, uh, if you wanna host of it, an event, you can, but the responsibility comes back on you as the event host. You have to set up the physical environment so people have the capacity to have that physical distance. So if you sponsor an event and you have it in a very closed venue and you allow too many people and people attend with the mindset, "I'm gonna go, but I'm gonna keep my distance and I'm gonna put this good mitigation," but your event physical space doesn't allow it, you are in violation of her proclamation on August twenty-first.
Your state of appeals.
And then you also have to, if you are the event sponsor, you have to have all those other public health mitigation factors in play. So you have to have increased hygiene, hand sanitizer, messaging for the public. So
It's horrible.
That, that, that responsibility, you can do it, but it does fall back on the event organizer to make sure that that's possible. A couple of weeks ago, we also talked about the Department of Inspections and Appeals and that they have put into play, if you are a bar or a restaurant or an event hosting alcohol or food, that you can, a- as a public person, you can come in if you see that the built environment is, is not a good setup. If you take a picture and you submit it to the Department of Inspections and Appeals, they'll come out, they'll talk to the management after the fact. If they deem that your environment was not set up appropriately, there's these graduated penalties that they, fines, mostly fines.
We're not gonna be sending police down there, though, then?
No.
No, I, I, I think anytime we've gone through this is that law enforcement and all these proclamations urge statewide to enforce this governor's ask. And that's some of the last part of the proclamations when she ever comes out with it and updates. And, but normally law, it's good, judgment, where you go and advise the governor, uh, you know, and, but in other words, there are warnings that come with it, just to hope, to accommodate it, and you just don't barge in, but you do, uh, it come with some warnings. Uh, we felt we've had a couple instances that there was not even warnings given in scenarios, but people still be calling into Julia or me complaining in the nine-one center, "Why is this going on?" And so that's, that's the bad publicity you get with it. I guess the court, the appeals, they basically, when the last governor's proclamation, two proclamations ago, decided, "Oh, wait a second, this, this affects liquor and food licensing permitting in Iowa, and we need to step up." So they put that letter out and they had these graduated levels. Now, in the state, there's been some penalties of a thousand dollars. The first penalty is a thousand, the second is seven days' suspension, and the third is taking your permits. And so, uh, which I don't know what that means. Uh, so, uh, that's pretty serious, I think, if I was, was a business owner, 'cause they've been hit hard enough already. So I think it's, it's, the onus is on the business owner to take heed to that. Am I doing everything that I can, you know, the best that I can to help accommodate and still have some reason of a business, so?
And then there's a certain amount of things that are just outside of your control as an event organizer, and you just have to be mindful of that. For example, we're working very closely with the Glenwood School District, their athletic director, their, their entire administration is going above and beyond trying to create the safest environment that they can for schools. If you have a chance to go on social media and see the, the video short that the athletic department put together, and the end of it was all the athletes encouraging our community to mask up so they could play.
Football game was good, too. There, a lot of people wore masks.
So, um, Devin, um, called me and he said, "You know, the football game went great." He, everybody wore a mask when they came in. The, a hundred percent of the student population was wearing their mask when they were congregating. People were social distancing. He was extremely, extremely pleased with compliance and, and everybody seemed like they were taking it very seriously, right up to the very end. And you know, that was a big game and it was a big victory and, and emotions were high. And afterwards, the athletes congregated on the cement pad and the crowd descended, and it was all bets were off. And you know why? Everybody meant well, but it was a celebration and caution a little bit went by the wayside. And you know, you just, you live and learn from those. The, the athletic department says, "You know what? That won't happen again. Now we're gonna instruct our athletes after the game. There's no congregating on the pad. We, we were, we were too good, we were spot-on for the whole thing. We're not gonna blow it at the end." So they're gonna have another plan for the, for the athletes to exit the field and just, what it comes down to as the event host, you don't want to, um, set up the environment, so all those good measures are put in, are flown out the window. Now, what people do in their own time and their own space, that's on them. We, and, and we're not in the, in the world of trying to control what happens. We're just trying to make it safe for the general public when it's in a public setting.
It's just, we see it, it's, it's across the board. I mean, Glenwood did well by masking and distancing and marking off chairs and seats and everything, you know? They were, they were on it the whole night. And then we go to trainer last night for a JV game and there was no mask required. Sit wherever you want, full-service concession stand. All the bathrooms were open, all the drinking cons were open. It was, it was a football game. So to be twenty miles away and just have it be night and day, it's just odd to see. We're looking at the same rules, but they're different.
Yeah, but you know, you have to be very proud of your community
Oh, yeah.
To go to the level that they are, and I wanna tell you that that's not done easily, and it has taken extraordinary effort on our school district's part, and they deserve to be commended. And I, I think it's very admirable that I, I do think they're going above and beyond. I think our school district is ever so committed to keeping our kids in school. So regardless of athletics or special events, the overriding concern that we have is what can we do to keep our community as safe as we can because kids need to be in the school building? So we'll do what we can.
Good.
Um, in regards to the CARES Act, last week, you signed a resolution that allowed us to apply for that funding. Public health is ready to roll. We've received, um, the final little bit that we need from Patrick. We are, um, we're on track to submit that document by Friday. Um, we, one update for public health, in the last week, we did ask our county attorney for a ruling on sharing of information with our school districts. So school districts have FERPA, that's their privacy. They don't disclose health-related information about their students. The Department of Ed gave schools permission to release any health-related educate, health-related information to public health related to, um, contact tracing. We did not have permission to share our information. Um, the school district brought up a really good concern. They said, "You know what? Let's say we have an athlete who, um, needs to be in, in confinement and it's nothing related to school. They, they are in, they are positive because of something that happened out in the community. If we don't know that and that student wants to show up at school because they're driven academically or they're driven to compete, we need to know who that student is because we don't want him here." So, long story short, our county attorney, uh, issued a written document that gave permission for public health to disclose information directly related to COVID-19 only, to share the minimal amount necessary. We have a plan in place. I would, originally, it was written so information could only be shared administrator to administrator. I don't think Devin wants me calling him per se. I think that information flow needs to go public health nurse to school nurse, and, and that would be the limit. Now, if, if I need to notify Devin of something or another superintendent, I could, but largely, I'd like to see that information go from public health nurse to school nurse. Nurses understand, um, protected health information and, and I think that's a secure way to share information. So we have that document from our county attorney and we're, we are sharing pertinent information with our school districts.
Yeah, Chris, suggest gets out to watch our care, just take this on you.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Nope.
This is like a repeat, isn't it? Welcome to my world.
Yes.
I think right here, I think right here, they should say one, something like that. I need to run all of our C and G of the city.
Yeah, can I just?
Can I check any day later?
Yeah.
I have positive cases.
Would you, would you stop my next stairs and tell him we gotta fix this?
Yeah, yeah.
And then tell him not to release until I can now say.
Uh, what about getting it to the OT by nine?
Well, then they, we'll put high confidence and he cleans that up then, okay?
Okay.
Then you can release it.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Darren, you're up, buddy.
How are you?
All right. Quick updates, lease for billing, I'll start with that. These are copy of homes and the full month of what we, what we want for Carol, for what we had. Uh, homes, we had six new homes this past month in August, up to twenty-five this year. And the other report just kinda shows what we've issued this for August. Uh, building-wise, inspections, very busy, but this is our time of busy. Uh, I think we're gonna see it continue till November after Thanksgiving, then maybe it might slow down in December, but we'll see where it goes. But we've been getting still a lot of homes that I know, at least eight of them, they're still gonna be coming in before next month, surprisingly, so it's pretty, pretty decent. We'll have a really good year for homes. Uh, building-wise, other than that, the WSI project's going really well, uh, commercial-wise. Uh, we're gonna still have that done by, uh, next, end of next month. Uh, one thing they did, I was notified on yesterday, I was just out there this morning, that they're gonna not paint the building. There's no regulations, so if it ever comes back on you guys, why didn't they paint the building? There's no regulations on industrial zone that it has to be painted or colored. They're gonna power wash it and just leave it concrete. I ain't just, and they're not gonna keep, they were gonna paint it, I think, off-white or something or a brown, but they decided, just cost the money and everything else, they're not gonna do it. And they asked, talked to me yesterday, why not? They had to, there's nothing Arizona code that says they had to. So they're working on that. Uh, we just, on the Echo buildings moving pretty slow, but it's moving. They're gonna wanna be done by the end of the month, too. It's just a big warehouse. I don't think there's much really going on there. I know Mike's been having some issues, uh, health department, Mike's with, uh, the well and being public versus private. I'm not getting in the middle of that. Uh, it depends on, they've changed the use of it, not the use, but the ownership, and they're gonna be assembling more, so it's gonna have more than twelve people in there, I guess, assumingly. So I don't know what's going on with that.
Well, the last time we had trouble with that was Playhouse, and we had to bring the state in for, for the water and septic.
And to me, yeah, that's a legitimate one. This was permitted and approved as a warehouse with less than twelve people per day. Now, it sounds like the mechanical's gonna take it all. They're gonna be assembling, have crews in there, pre-assembling stuff, putting it on a trailer, and then taking it over to Google. So I don't know how many they're gonna have, but to me, I'm gonna let Mike deal with that as we go. Uh, so we should, and I think they're gonna, yeah, they'll be done with that probably by the first of October, maybe mid-October, depending on when they're gonna start using it. Uh, the new, uh, engineers' building's coming along really good, a little slow. There seem like to be a standstill right now, getting in subs to finish a lot of their stuff, but we got all the concrete poured, all the garages, uh, end of last week, and we're still moving forward, sheetrocking, finishing the offices and a lot of mechanical plumbing going on. They got a lot of site work to work on, but they're hopefully gonna start that, they said, this month. But commercial-wise, those are the projects that've been going. Uh, haven't had much of any other things come in that are major ones. Uh, we do, uh, right now, we'll talk about planning and zoning, but I have this solar, uh, draft one that other counties have used, a pretty simple solar, uh, chapter, or new chapter we're doing. Mid-America has reached out to me last week, and I knew they were hitting around, and they're gonna look at being doing a possible solar farm in two to five years along Applewood out there in that area. Uh, so we're having them review that ordinance and then take the planning commission. Hopefully, they'll have comments back for, uh, for October's meeting. And that's what I'm shooting for to, and they might even come propose something different, uh, just to protect them and their interests for large, like industrial-type solar power plants, so, or power systems. So they're gonna be, they have to follow with the main transmission lines. There's one that goes through Mills, I think, between that and then the one in Park County, but it sounds like they wanna use, the majority of the solar system will be in Mills County, but they're still doing their due diligence and talking to property owners and everything else, so I don't know where that's going. So that is something moving forward. We'll get to planning zoning, I'll let Holly do a little update on what we did last month. I'll talk about the bottom when we get to it.
Perfect. Zoning Board of Adjustment for the month of August, we had three items on the agenda, two of which were heard, one withdrew their application shortly before the meeting. One item was for an expansion to the existing Rock Quarry in Malvern, which did pass. The second item was on a new social hall, which also passed. We've already had one application turned in for the September meeting. Uh, deadline is September third, and I have been notified from a possible two other applications. So Zoning Board of Adjustment has been busy. Regarding Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission committee has been meeting regularly, discussed the ordinances, including the update of the soil extraction ordinance, grading, and solar energy. Uh, the goal is to make the soil extraction and the grading processes easier to understand, as well as to fix minor flaws from when the ordinance was created, such as better definitions, process explanations, and where to place it in the chapter. Uh, we, with the soil extraction ordinance, we formed a committee. The committee has been meeting once per month in addition to the committee, or in addition to the actual commission meeting. And most recently, I met with Tyler from the county attorney's office to discuss the proposed updates to those ordinances, including, he took a copy of what we've discussed on solar energy, and he took down notes from what we had been discussing with the soil extraction. He is out of the office, but we are continuing to work remotely together via email, and, um, that's about it, unless you have any questions on those.
On the last item with the, our Planning and Zoning Commission, and the bill legislation that was approved, that I've talked to Richard about, uh, about Planning and Zoning Commission and Zoning Board of Adjustments, is mainly a Zoning Board of Adjustments, which we already complied with about having appointees within the rural area. Uh, it kinda got snuck in, snuck in. We had a, a zone, county zoning officials meeting last, uh, yeah, last Friday, and they snuck in that Planning and Zoning Commission all had to be from rural areas, no longer in cities, for any appointed committees, which is, we tried to fight with our legislature. It kinda got snuck in. We were all okay with, because most of all counties were doing Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought it never, yeah. Anyways, now we have to abide by it. Uh, counties are already advertising, they've already notified their people that are on the city, in city limits, that they can no longer serve. I wanted to bring it to you guys to decide. Uh, it's not a fast, uh, have to do it now, but a lot of counties are. Uh, I kinda, and a few other counties, felt like we ought to finish out at least the year with who we have on our Planning and Zoning Commission. We have two right now that are affected, which would be Lyle, Mayberry, and Ron Cone that live in city limits, that we would have to replace and do applications and everything. Those are two strong, I mean, Lyle's been our chairman ever since we've had it, before I even got here. So, um, I kinda looking for some direction from you guys, what you guys would like to do and how you'd handle it.
Rules.
Because we should do it, so a lot of counties are doing it now and having an effect in next, by the, by today, well, yesterday, as of September first.
Well, actually, I was wondering if they could finish out their term, even.
Some of them go till, uh...
Because you've got, I think, Lyle's term is for another three or four years. I would like at least to the end of the year, just because we're in the middle of reconstructing and working on these ordinances, and both of them are very instrumental in that, and I value their opinions and knowledge.
We look at the end of the year, getting half applications, but it gives them time to finish what they'd like to do.
I'd like to see them finish this pile to what they've started. I mean, to bring in two new people in the middle of the, what you guys have been doing and try to retrain them and bring them on board with what needs to be done. Why, if we can, if we can extend till the end of the year, I'm fine with that, I don't know.
Ken, I wanna, that's your guys' call. Uh, a lot of jurisdictions, and that's what we suggest, is take it to the board and let them make that decision. But it is law. It took effect immediately as of September first. Uh, but a lot of jurisdictions, there's a lot that they don't have any rural areas. It's all city, Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustments, so, and they're kinda been struggling with that, but they're looking at the end of the month, and they're letting their supervisors make their decisions. So I don't know if you need to have formal action on, or just tell us to, to keep them on till the end of the month and we'll notify them.
Yeah, we gotta do.
We wait and ask Tyler.
There you go.
We can put it on the, we can put it on the agenda next month if we need to. I'll talk to Tyler, too.
They find.
I mean, next week. But I just, I think that's what I, me and Holly talked about, is recommending is just to go But I just, I think that's what I, me and Holly talked about, is recommending is just to go to the end of the year, but we'll let Lyle and Ron know, um, later. They have today or tomorrow that this is what was discussed, and this is what was decided. And anything official that you guys need to do, we'll do. So, any questions on that, or anything? I hate, I'm too big, too strong people on our board, and it's kinda, not that they'll hurt us, but...
Those are the only two that have it, any knowledge of.
Exactly, have the experience and knowledge of that.
Run the meeting, text lead, know what zoning is, does.
So, well, every first of the year, we pick a chair and chair, so it'll work after first of the year, so. Come December first, we'll get, uh, come in here, and then have you, we'll start advertising for, on applications, have people apply for it. All right. Is there anything else you guys have for our department?
Well, do you wanna do that before then, so that they will be, come to a meeting, and, you know, the new people could come to the meeting?
I was just going to ask that, if that was possible.
We could, we could start it this month.
We had an interesting one with the city the other night, P and Z Board did. We was trying to decide how to do parking, and finally, I think it was John Butel, I'm not sure. He says, what does the P and Z Board have to do with parking? What, what part of parking do we control?
How much, where at, what kind?
Well, it was for an event, you know?
A temporary.
Yeah, and somebody said, I don't know, another member says, oh, I think I'll just look over this. We, we, we really can't tell the police officer and stuff, you know?
You can do developments or something like that, speech utilization, and then they get involved.
It was funny to watch all that, you know, decade or so ago, it was parking, parking, you have to have so many spots for so many people in the place. And then you've got all these big areas where it's all parking, and no one's using it, they're never full, so it's wasted space. So now they're condensing it again, so it's fun to watch it go like this.
It is. That's, well, we'll, we'll come back, if you guys are okay on Tuesday, we'll come back and have an official that, and then have it advertised for two board members.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I told you, Patrick, Patrick wants a new name, or what, here, you know?
We'll just skip the next two.
Yeah.
Well. Next item.
Is this gonna help us?
Part of it will, part of it's just, uh, bureaucratic mandates. So the, the part about changing the website name, so the Secretary of State's office, uh, in the interest of election security, has mandated that any, any website related to official election business has to have a .gov domain name, which basically means any county website, essentially. Um, so we've gotta go through the process of, of claiming a, a .gov domain name. MillsCountyIowa.gov is basically what we can use. I mean, they, the feds pretty much mandate how you can have your name spelled out. Um, and we have to meet their requirements as far as, uh, cybersecurity and, uh, ADA compliance and all these fun things.
Yep.
Uh, it's four hundred dollars a year for that domain name, and we have to send them a for, formal letter to the .gov administration requesting that name. And that's what this letter is basically, uh, it's a formal letter on board letterhead, signed by Lonnie, um, asking us, asking for permission to have that name. We won't get...
Make a cool name for it?
It's MillsCountyIowa.gov. That's basically how we have to, they tell us how we have to use. It's gotta have the county that's on the state, and, uh, so it, it does, it's probably a little easier to, you know, tell people over the phone than MillsCOI.us.
Dot UI, it's backslash, you, yeah.
So we'll keep that name, just because we don't wanna break any links that are out there already, and we pay twenty dollars a year for that name, so it's not a big deal. Uh, but we'll start transitioning people to this new name, hopefully.
So we're on the second one, right?
Oh, was that the second one? Sorry, I started backwards.
Second one is, is the name of, of Mills County.
Federal .gov program, yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the new federal .gov program, to use MillsCountyIowa.gov for domain purposes.
I will second that motion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anything I need to sign, Patrick?
Right there. Carol noted it already. The first piece going backwards is the website, so. In regards to the CARES Act funding, I think the consensus was last time that we've got enough there to, to do a couple things at least. And one of those would be, probably the most important would be the county website. So this would be a complete redesign of the county website, using a company called Civic Plus. They specialize in, all they do is government, county, and city websites. Um, it'll be a kind of a content management site, so we'll kinda transition, each department will have the ability to manage their own individual pages if they so choose. Not a requirement, they can still come to me, but there's a few that would like to take ownership of their pages, just to keep them more up to date, and do some things. And Jackie can do the agendas, some different things. Um, but the, the whole premise of the website is it's, it's geared more towards making the website mobile friendly, allowing more interactivity with the public, so we can send them alerts regarding COVID, uh, they can subscribe, so they know when there's a change to the website, they don't just have to keep looking every now and then. So it's a lot more interactive, a lot more, uh, user friendly, and a lot more mobile device friendly, so, which is how people browse the web now. It's on their phones, at different devices, so this'll work a lot better. Uh, but it'll be a custom-designed website, so we'll, once we get to that stage, we'd have to get with each, probably department heads, and get some input on how we want it to look and be designed.
Each department, yeah.
So, uh, the total price is, it's nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Nineteen what?
Nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Eight twenty?
That includes the first year maintenance. After that, we'll pay forty, forty-three hundred dollars a year, uh, basically subscription for changes, support, and then, that titles us to a free, uh, complete redesign of the website every four years, so keep the website fresh and up to date, so. But to start, so it's nineteen thousand eight twenty to purchase the redesign of the county website using Civic Plus.
You know, we're adding this into the next cycle of CARES, right?
Yeah, it'll have to be, cause, yeah. So this and that BlackBerry thing we did last week will be part of the next, uh, resolution, right? Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the nineteen hundred, nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollar payment for the new website, and the forty-three hundred dollars a year, a year thereafter.
Yeah, after, so that's, the first year's included in the nineteen eight twenty.
Okay. I will second that motion. Is there any discussion, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anything we need to sign on there?
On that one.
Just roll forward with it?
Yep.
Okay.
Good deal.
Thank you, Mr.
Uh, I don't have any supervisor updates.
I got a couple, I got one, we had an issue with production meeting on mental health and stuff here last weekend. Our biggest dilemma is with violent people that we have as, as residents. Uh, we have one in Malvern and one in Shenandoah, and the problem is, the sheriff's department doesn't want them, the hospital department doesn't want them. Uh, they can't be placed in another mental health facility or anything, because their record and stuff can be denied, and so. Uh, I'm quite certain that's gonna be something that's gonna come up, and the legislators are, okay, what do we do with these people? How do we protect our workers? Our biggest problem has been, the workers don't come back to work. And the people that's there now, you know, they're not gonna work another eight hours or so, so. Uh, you know, I had a conference call with the Resource Center and DOJ, and they are getting to the preliminaries on the investigation of the Resource Center up there, so. Hopefully by the end of October, it will be pretty well brought out to the public, and tell us what they're gonna do to the people that brought this all on, so. That's all I have.
Mr. Gaston, what happened to you?
Did you muck him?
We, uh, we last week, I told Boogie, it was, uh, three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, it was like every money came in from the engineer.
I did hear that, yeah, Carol said that, that's good.
Yeah, we were trying to track it down last week early, and it looked like it'd been, it'd been processed.
System's open now, and we've got...
Yeah. So that came in.
Something flowing, that's good.
Morning, ma'am, how are we?
Is Cory out in the room? There he is. You all right, buddy? We knew you were here somewhere. You're up, buddy.
Okay, uh, we brought in Ames Construction to discuss our conveyor belt agreement. Um, kinda, quick recap, Ames Construction's constructed a conveyor belt to move material south of Bungie Avenue, north over top of Bungie Avenue, also crossing Applewood Avenue, and continuing north to Mid-America Plant. Um, they have done well in obtaining all the permits, and, uh, going through the process for, through my office and through Darren's office. Worked with NADA's office on drafting an agreement, um, with liability concerns as far as material crossing the roads. And now we're just trying to finalize that agreement before Ames, uh, utilizes that conveyor belt. If I'm correct, Ames is, uh, the last holdup is their, their request for a reduction in the surcharge fee, and that's kinda where we left off. I forwarded you guys a copy of the letter I received last week, here's a top, paper copy of it, um, with the request for the surcharge, um, uh, reduction. So I'll kinda let Adam, if you guys want to say anything right now.
Yeah, so as Cory said, uh, Ames is happy with all the language in the drafted up agreement, uh, with the exception of the surcharge staying the same. So we drafted up this letter, um, providing our, uh, information, the, the facts given throughout the agreement and throughout the county ordinances. And so Ames has no problem with the liability issues that were brought up in the agreement, we are ready to sign on that side of things. Uh, once we get to the surcharge situation figured out with the trucking, bush convey, uh, the agreement will be good for Ames. So this letter was with the other guy, Ben Lovin, who is not here today, it's our vice president for Ames. And, um, I guess all we ask, please review the letter, uh, go over the information, and then provide written response, so we have it on record and filed.
Did notice, uh, the request didn't change from the previous request, still at five cents, so.
Well, I'll start off, uh, I think it's poor on your benefit of, as Ames, here we are down to the wire you're wanting to run. You've known about this contract or this extraction fee for how many months? And you stayed in here, you know, that, uh, you wanted to go probably today for us to agree to this. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, you, you're stating no negotiation. You just want, you wanna pay five cents, that's it. Turn around and walk away from us. I feel that's a slap in the face to Mills County myself, and to the taxpayers. We have a soil extraction that other entities have had to pay. They didn't use our roads or anything, they used levee roads and stuff, they paid the thirty-five cents to take the sand out, put it on the levee and stuff. Uh, they came to us beforehand, talked to us, told them, we told them how we felt. Uh, there is no negotiation here, you just wanna sign off today, and you can go off and run. I don't feel that's right, myself.
So I'll address the two, the two things there, so one, so we paid for, uh, the full thirty-five cents for four hundred thousand.
What you're cracking, yeah.
And we have no problem for you to pay that for conveyed material until we have another agreement set in place. So as we continue, as the monthly reports continue, um, we will just keep paying that thirty-five cents unless this starts dragging out, and we need to make, you know, an action of it. Uh, we understand that, you know, we got down to the wire, we got down a little bit close, so we're not gonna push and say, you know, it's, it's on you guys to figure this out, and we understand that. So we've already prepaid for the cubic yards, and so those cubic yards, all whether it be truck, conveyor, which continues to be painted, and full surcharge rate, build other agreements set in place. The last paragraph in here, um, if there is an exception of our request that you guys would like, that's what I like, that's what I mentioned, we'd like it in writing. So we have record of it, everyone, so we have good, uh, communication going back and forth and good responses. So it's not a, it's not, it's not a demand. We just like the exceptions and comments to be forwarded in writing.
Yet another point I can bring out, it, uh, the thirty-five cents, we've been doing this for years down here, and everybody comes in and wants an exception to the rule, wants an exception to the rule. Uh, I'm not saying that we can't, but it's part of our business. Uh, we've been struck hard by the floodwaters and stuff of two thousand nineteen, uh, and now we have the coastal fight and stuff, you know? Uh, we need every penny we can scrounge around for the, for the use without charging taxpayers more taxes. Uh, so I'm not against the reduction, but I feel it's, you know, something in a normal range, I don't know. But, uh, you offered up a, a five cents cubic yard for, for an extraction fee, uh, I take that back to my constituents. Uh, I'm not gonna use the language they tell me to go to, but, you know, uh, I'm just watching out for the taxpayers of Mills County, I mean...
How many yards you gonna convey, roughly four? Uh, I think it's gonna come out to be right around five million.
That's what you'll convey, not total trucking, or, or not total job?
Right.
You'll, you'll convey around five million?
Yep.
Okay.
And then a little bit more than a million truck.
Yeah, yeah, I knew you were, and the trucking, I don't think we're, there's any questions or any, or argument on that.
And then, yeah, then we...
Ames has been responsive so far with complaints we've received on trucking.
Sure.
Um, just complaints, uh...
You're gonna get some of that home in three years, it's just gonna happen.
No, no, we, we deal with it wherever we go.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
But we, we haven't received any reports, um, I know we don't have a signed agreement saying that, I mean, but, but knowing what reports that we're wanting, uh, it would be nice to...
Yeah, I sent over the, the cubic yard totals for July and August, and then emailed that I requested the haul route extension, so through, or through June and July, sorry.
I must've missed that.
We had, we had hauled a hundred thousand cubic yards.
You guys, you guys measuring these every month?
Yeah, so we do, we have a professional land survey, HDM associates come out, and they do surveys on our borrow site once a month, and actually, we were out there yesterday, so.
Okay.
Then the next week or so, I'll have another little report put together for the yards moved to date.
Good.
Do you know that, too?
Uh, I include that, to email Cory with the request for extension of our haul route.
You, you do that, I need you to email to our office, too, cause it's under the permits in our office, so we can keep track of it.
Got it, yep.
We have yet to see that, so we didn't know where we're at.
Yeah, it was very in, informal, unapologetic, well...
I think we need something more formal from the surveyor, stating where you're at.
From the surveyor?
I, I, I would, that's what we get from other, other...
Oh, yeah, well, that's no problem, I can do that.
And you can submit a, email it to us, uh, to me and Cory, and then we can have it.
I'm, I missed that, that email.
Yeah, I'll get another one sent out and then...
Where are we at right now, then, if we get a letter here soon?
Uh, I couldn't give you a for sure, I'd say it's... Probably getting close to two hundred thousand yards now. Once I get the survey information back, I'll put it all together with their data and send it out.
Yeah, we'd like to know the number, which we talked about before, how many cubic yards per hour, per day that the conveyor's gonna be up moving?
Our goal, it'll move, the conveyor will move somewhere between fourteen to eighteen thousand cubic yards a day and, uh, variance will be because there is only so much we can hold on site per day. And as we get to new parts of the site with deeper fills, we'll be able to take a little bit more, sometimes have to back it off, but per day, fourteen thousand to eighteen thousand cubic yards, so that comes up to be like seven thousand to nine thousand per ten hour shift.
Yeah, we just need to have that in writing with what you're estimating and when we might be reaching that four hundred thousand, say end of October, I'm just gonna ask something like that and written from your surveyor, from your engineer, civil engineer, where he's looking at quantities wise, where we're at now and when we'll reach that estimate of when we're gonna reach that four hundred thousand and give us, I think monthly, maybe biweekly would probably be better, what numbers we're doing once the conveyor's run.
Biweekly may be estimated because they don't quantify it until the surveyor's in there, so you don't have a hard number until they hit the button, so...
Correct. We just need, so we can keep track of it.
Yep, understood.
How much longer are you gonna be running trucks?
Uh, so, that's been kind of a hot question from everyone that I've talked to and the real answer is, once the conveyor reaches full production, is when we get rid of the trucks. And that hasn't happened yet, or conveyor's still kind of in its, you know, first phase of testing and trying different things and fixing, uh, issues as they come up with putting all this sand on it. So we haven't really had a day where it's ran all day, we haven't been able to run it at night, because no one's confident enough to let it go at night, we can't see very well. But our, our goal is by next week, we won't have any more trucks on the road until we start another trucking operation, probably in like three or four weeks, once, once we get approved to work in the levee area.
Well, my biggest concern is fall harvest is coming up here and we'll, we'll add two hundred and fifty to three hundred grain trucks in that area.
Yep.
Going to Bungie and to Sire and you guys are still running fifty dirt trucks. It can get really congested on Bungie, getting on and off, so...
I think we should be good by then, we definitely don't want that either, it makes a headache for everyone.
Can I just get something clarified, running the conveyor, if we don't get an agreement signed, approved, they, they shouldn't be running the conveyor over the roads, is that right, you know?
What he's saying is they're gonna pay the thirty-five cents as of now on anything they're conveying, so as long as that's taken into account...
I just wanna make sure we get an agreement done for you guys.
Right, the liability purpose, if that hasn't been signed, that's wrong.
So, that's, so we talked to Corey about that, we're, we're ready to sign that, so if you, if that's gonna be an issue, we'd ask to split the...
I just wanna make sure, because we've already been, we're operating the conveyor on tests and we're taking dirt over the road and that's what I, we don't want till we get this agreement done.
And if, if that's gonna be an issue, then we'd ask to split the liability away from the surcharge, because it's kinda two separate things anyway, and we're ready to sign the liability part out, we have no problem with that, we think that's written good, so we'd sign that today, we just don't wanna sign it all as one package, because then we tie ourselves into, what we're still working through with the surcharge, so if that's gonna, um, become a holdup or an issue, we just have to separate the two things, ultimately sign the liability one immediately.
So there's been up and running, as they've been testing it, we haven't had an agreement done. Uh, inspection wise, they're all clear to start operating and everything else, we just need this agreement.
I guess my biggest concern was, when you guys left here a couple weeks ago, that you guys were gonna come back with another offer and somewhere between and we were gonna be good to go and then I get this email that says five cents, we're sticking to our guns and it just kinda caught me off guard a little bit. We, we, I think this board understands that you are putting less stress on our roads by conveying it, I don't, I don't know that anybody will argue that. Um, there's still big trucks that have to come in and out to maintain that equipment, to haul the equipment in and out, so there is some stress still on the road. Um, even the trucking that's getting done is starting to beat up that asphalt a little bit, it scares me to see what that's gonna look like in two more years, but we can jump that hurdle then if we have to, I think Corey's taking some pictures of how it looked beforehand and after, so...
We did a joint.
I think everybody's on the, you know, everybody's on the same page, but I just wanna say, we do wanna work with you guys and, and the thirty-five cents that you're willing to pay for, you know, for, you know, while you're conveying right now, um, I, I think that's a good effort by you guys, but, uh, we... we're willing to work with you, so let's get it done.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna fight, you guys don't wanna fight, let's, let's move on and fix this and, and, and work.
I, I have no problem with signing the agreement for liability and stuff. Uh, I do have a problem with not having our third supervisor here today to discuss this and be with us to make a decision on this. Uh, I guess, being the attorneys here, I can make a motion to say that we table the, the rate of pay until next week, when we all three can be here to, you know, adjust it, agree to it. Is that, I mean, was, was the extraction fee supposed to be part of the viability?
It was just all in the contract, it's all...
Yeah, it's just a separate article in that agreement.
We can make an addendum later.
Okay.
For a separate attachment.
Yeah, I don't wanna stop them from working, I don't wanna keep them moving.
But I feel that Carol is gonna have some important things to say about this and I think we all three should be a vote on it, it shouldn't be, you know, just two of us, it's, it's tough sometimes with a, with a three man, three person board, uh, so, uh, if we can make an addendum to the contract, do we have to do that in the minutes or...
You'd have to do it in a separate meeting and approve it.
Can they approve the agreement for liability for everything other than the surcharge fee?
If you give me the blessing to take the portion out about the fees, then I can change that and you guys can approve it.
Can I, can we just say up to four hundred thousand that you paid for, add this thirty-five cents, and then we make an amendment for the rest of it later?
Well, they're, 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 they're trucking the four hundred thousand though, correct?
No, so they're saying they're gonna use part of this conveyor.
Well, we just, we just don't wanna get into the binary, you know, the, the county tells us we can't use our conveyor.
I want you to keep moving, yeah.
So, so that, that's why I said that. That four hundred thousand, we'll burn that up with trucking throughout the project, if we don't burn it up right now, say we, we send the trucks away and then the conveyor runs and then we, so we still got that million yards to truck, so that four hundred thousand yards would get burned up eventually by the trucks, it might not be right away, but we'll use that money at some point.
I just wanted...
Yeah.
I think removing it might be the easier thing, is that...
I think that's what you wanna get, you guys wanna do, approve the agreement for everything outside of surcharge fee.
Except for which article is that, Corey?
It is... Five. Article five payment.
With the understanding that there'll be a separate attachment or addendum.
Or article five. Can I be safe and say in the board supervisor's today agrees to the, uh, conveyor belt agreement with the exception of article five due to fee pricing?
Yes, but with the understanding that it will be, that will be contained in a separate addendum or attachment.
Okay.
With the understanding...
Approve the agreement with the exception of article five.
And with the understanding...
With the understanding...
That there'll be a separate addendum or attachment to include the fees.
Oh, Adam pointed it out, uh, it would be article three and five.
Just the surcharge portion of article three, because article three is permitting the surcharge.
Separate addendum to include the fee schedule.
There, and, so it's in article three and five. Do you wanna look at that?
Well, I think keeping it in three is fine, because that's a general statement that they're gonna follow the rules. I think we can, I think we can keep three and five, just have a separate fee schedule for what you're taking by truck and conveyor. Does that make sense? That's how, that's how I would do it.
Yeah, I think that would work.
So that's saying you're agreeing to pay it.
Right.
And there'll be an addendum or attachment that says how much for what.
Wanna repeat that for Jackie?
And they could keep working and moving dirt and sand.
Let me just give us the totals, we'll multiply that by the cents per cubic yard at the end. So, I've determined that those, article three and article five are general agreements to the extraction fee. An addendum will be added later to determine the rate for trucking by road and trucking by conveyor.
Article three and article five.
Are general agreements to follow the resource extraction...
Surcharge, I think it says.
Surcharge.
The what extraction?
Resource extraction, surcharge. Ordinances. An addendum will be added later to the agreement to determine the rate for conveying the resources. Because they'll pay the normal fee for the trucks, it'll just be an addendum for the conveyor belt. Does that make sense?
And that will be done next week, okay?
The agreement, if you wanna start operating it this week, and do more tests, all that.
Do we, do we need to sign the, the agreement today, Armani or...
Yes. Because that covers us liability wise.
We have a separate agreement written up, a separate contract, are we just gonna sign this and then...
That looks, everything in there, I think is gonna apply, it's just when we decide on the rate for the conveyor, the amount that's, or the rate for the dirt conveyed, we'll add that to the end, so that you won't be agreeing to that number until we all come to the table and have a meeting of the minds.
Yep.
Right, yeah, with your views on the conveyor, will we include that thirty-five cents?
That's correct, that's our, our line, because we were, you know, we understand we're a little...
You gotta keep moving.
Late to the ball game and this request came in late, so we're, we're willing to pay that thirty-five cents until we get this resolved.
Geez, what kind of motion you want?
I was gonna say, is that your motion, but that's about five different people.
Well, I would, I would, go ahead and read that part back and then we'll...
Okay, I have, Crouch made the motion to approve the agreement, to approve the conveyor belt agreement with the exception of article five.
I think we're, we're now amending that motion.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I guess I shouldn't have said that as a motion, I was just, I was talking, but, no, I, I think we need something in there about that. The motion I was gonna make is, we are in favor of signing the agreement today so they can keep working, but I want a motion or something saying that we're going to discuss and approve later the fees. Or... See what she says when she gets them right, huh?
So it's a motion to approve the conveyor belt agreement...
With an amendment.
With an addendum.
We're understanding that next week, the board will take, be taking up the issue...
To add an addendum?
Of an addendum for the dirt conveyed.
Extraction fee. For the conveyor.
Close to what you got.
I have several things here, okay. So, Crouch made the motion in favor of signing the agreement today to... I have three different paragraphs. Okay, this is what I have, approve the agreement as, of the conveyor belt with the exception of article five.
No.
With the understanding that there will be a separate addendum to state the fee schedule. No? You were changing all that?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Carol's job's hard, huh?
This is sticky and I wanna make sure we do it right with these guys.
Right, actually with me, I'm trying to...
Motion to approve the signing of the agreement today.
Of the soil extraction and conveyor system agreement.
The soil extraction system agreement and grant of temporary easement. Okay, got that.
With the understanding...
With the understanding...
That the board will later add an addendum.
Will later add an addendum.
After the parties reach an agreement.
After the parties reach an agreement.
About the soil extraction fee.
About the soil extraction fee.
For the portion conveyed.
Motion to approve the signing of the agreement today of the soil extraction system agreement and grant of temporary easement with the understanding that the board will later add an addendum after the parties reach an agreement about the soil extraction fee for the portion conveyed.
Guys are good with that?
Yep.
That was your motion.
That's my motion.
Sorry, you guys.
No, that's fine.
So I'll still be signing the contract that still says five cents a yard? Because it says five cents a yard in here.
Oh.
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't.
I didn't see that in this.
Oh, it was in this, okay, that's not the same, okay, alright, 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 okay.
So this is, this is for our loss, thirty-five cents, you'll add the addendum that should be the portion conveyed when you guys decide.
I will second that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right above your name.
And this keeps them moving, I don't wanna...
They'll be...
They gotta keep moving.
...steam, because the liabilities will be signed.
Just get us those engineer estimates or what you have now. Look at her email, that'd be great, Adam has my email.
Yep.
I might print out a new page, number two, since I wrote it up.
Just wanna just scan everybody a copy.
Yep. Without peril here is Lori, the deputy, Lori's signature. Yeah, and I'll scan it, send you guys a copy.
We got a letter to you guys next week with our thoughts, but...
Yep.
Let's get this put to bed.
I agree, I'll get you a bud.
Have you seen your trouble citizen since we talked yesterday?
Not a person.
No, they have a county citizen who's trying to tell them that they're not following the rules, they, they've been following, uh...
We'll make that decision.
Conditional use permit and, and, uh, haul route, approved haul route, so, so no, they're, they're fine, it's just a little bit of harassment almost, and in fact, he went on to their Mid-American property, which I told him, next time that happens, go ahead and just call the sheriff's department for trespassing.
Yep, get rid of him.
Yeah, we're doing alright. Yeah, I appreciate your time. Jeff, I appreciate your time, do you guys have any need for us?
Yeah, if we do, we'll send it through Cory.
Cool, and then just to confirm, we're good on permit side and everything, inspection?
We're gonna finalize it out now that we got the agreement, so you guys start using it, so, I mean, I've already looked at everything. And then we'll be in touch, I'll get with you later this week.
A couple of us would like to come up and just give some kind of a little quick tour, I understand we can't go walk your system and interfere with anything, but we wouldn't mind looking at it, seeing, start, finish, drive-through, few minutes.
Sure.
To see how it works.
That would be awesome.
Coordinate that with me, we'll schedule it out.
Absolutely. Alright.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Seal card.
Don't ruin it.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll get to citizens, we do two hundred forty-fifth street or two hundred fifty, whatever.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, yeah.
We forget to get signature, Lori's signature on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. No, I do.
Let me know when you do that tour.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, I've seen it and I've been on, around it, but I'd like to go see some start to finish. Well, it might be something that you're, you're gonna see more and more of, so it'd be nice to just see it, see what we're approving. Thanks, Darren, what do you have for utility reports, Cory?
No util, no, no new utility permits.
Genesis.
Yes, this is Bay Ave ten to Genesis contracting for new shop building for the amount three hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred ninety dollars fifty-five cents. Majority of that's roofing and HVAC and siding.
HVAC and siding, they're, they're starting finishing inside pretty good too, though.
Yep, drywallings going a little slow and pouring the shop floor is delayed, so, so that I'd say they're still on schedule to be completed by end of October, sometime in October, so. Looking for approval for that?
Motion to approve the pay application to Genesis for three fifty-four eight ninety point five five.
I will second that motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none of all those in favor?
Aye. Underneath, Ken's signature.
Probably done with these people yet.
We're getting closer. We may, we may open up, you're talking about the next one?
Yeah.
We may open up the road on Friday. We'll see if they have some, a little bit of grinding to do on the pavement where we had some rain damage. As minimal, you, naked eye wouldn't be able to tell, especially driving on it. Yeah, that was back early August.
I didn't do it, I did not do it. No?
And then, and then they gotta do paint striping. We got shouldering.
Have to be striped for you.
Uh-huh, they pretty much have shouldering complete, so.
The guardrail in.
Guardrail's in.
That's always the last thing, how'd you get that done?
There, jam, Johnny on the spot, once they got some of that shouldering done.
I'd like to, it's not.
Yeah.
Last one on.
We could have the seating and everything else done and no guardrail.
We will, we can open it to the public without the seating being completed.
Sure.
And we plan to. But, but safety as far as paint striping, like I said. We are doing the signage in-house, and we've already got those locates done and already got the signs purchased, so we're, we're ready to post those, post those this week. We will have thirty days upon opening one hundred ninety street to close the railroad crossing one hundred eightieth, I think we'll I'm gonna direct our sign foreman to go down there and put some warning signs that the road will be, or the crossing will be closed here in the next two weeks.
At one hundred eightieth?
At one hundred eightieth.
We're not closing Carnes underneath the Plasmus Bridge.
No, we are not.
Is there any plan, is any plan to do that, yes, I had a couple visitors this morning, about six.
Nope, they will, they'll be able to go down one hundred eightieth, go west on Carnes, Kane, then it turns into Carnes and get to Lambert. Or they can go across some Jardine and go over the nice new bridge, so.
Yeah, Carnes.
So we, so that's kind of an update on that project, and now looking for approval for payout to thirty-one to United Contractors for Project R M C O sixty-five, par ninety-four, one hundred ninety street new bridge, and new P C C paving for the amount eight hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars ninety-two cents, and this is for the majority of its, the new paving, we're paying for the concrete.
I'll make a motion to approve payment to United Contractors at the amount of eight fifteen nine forty-nine point ninety-two.
I will second that motion, is there any discussion? How far along are we? Eighty, ninety, ninety-five percent, ninety-eight percent?
We are ninety-four, ninety-four percent.
That includes the remaining six percent is, some of that's retainage?
Uh, some of it's retainage, uh, shouldering and
Striping.
Striping, very, very minimal things.
Are we done with the railroad?
We will have one more day of railroad flagger when they do the seating, because they will be entering onto railroad right away.
I would like a total of that line item when you're done with this.
Yeah, I can do that.
You scare me to death, but I'd still like to see it. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Thank you, Cory.
I'm taking a break.
Does anybody need my vice or?
Not yet, but I'm sure we'll be in touch soon.
Let me do that, I'll get my phone right now.
Okay, I appreciate it. Once Richard gets back with.
Dug some tires, they have two twenty-first, two Kesterson, on the other side of the bridge, west side. There's more on the east side, you know, as you go across the bridge off two twenty-first. Uh, there's a pile over there, and there's a couple of them worn over next to the roadway at two twenty-first. I had, I hadn't seen those there before. I saw them there about two days ago. I'm wondering, do you think they dug those out at K Creek, but they didn't dredge that far towards Glenwood when they were dredging that, they were doing that further, you know, towards the river, you know, when they're taking soil out of there? I don't know, did they put them up there? Right, we turn off two twenty-first on two Kesterson, the bridge over K Creek.
Going to the poop plant.
There's a bunch of tires that were donated to science.
Oh, yeah, on Lambert. The two that visited me this morning said there's still some debris on the edge of the road, and asked if we were gonna clean that up.
At that location?
Yeah, at, on Lambert.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Big tree and maybe something else, piles of something. I didn't get an exact location, Cory, but it's, it's, it's down there, you know where we're at.
Other side of the interstate.
Be west, I'm assuming so.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Anyhow, I just dug it somewhere in there to you guys since you were.
What was your last name?
Anyhow, we'll get out of your hair, and I'll give you a holler later.
Yeah, I need to talk to you about a couple things.
Yeah, I figured, so, haven't seen you in a while. Anyhow, you all have a wonderful day.
You too.
Good luck in Glenwood. I'll drive past by the park so you can have something to do one of these days. Didn't get her last name.
Yeah, she's related to you.
She, the code enforcement?
Yeah. She's, she'd be hired as an option. I don't think they hired, I don't think, I think they're making her do code enforcement, and I don't think they're hiring somebody. We've talked about contracting for a while and.
I went down to get a permit. It was interesting.
Yeah, it was. Yeah. They had talked about, the city council, I think, they were just discussing about this year, way to go, it's something that they're thinking of. If they were dragging their feet on doing something like that, but they need to decide as the city develops.
I do have a couple items for general discussion. Talked about one hundred ninety street opening, hope, we'll see, sure would be nice to have it open before the holiday weekend, we had trouble Sun, Sunday someone blew through the road closure sign, and we found it.
Blew right through it?
Yeah, damaged it, I can imagine damaged their car, but we damaged the sign pretty well. But yeah, we, we, I've seen tire marks already down there, people see the fresh pavement and they can't wait to get on it, so if we get it open Friday, it sure would be nice instead of having to worry about it over the holiday weekend.
Right. Without a doubt, then they're gonna see if they can jump to the bridge.
The new quarter mile down to the intersection.
Yeah, it's straight and flat.
It is.
Was it, I got a phone call yesterday from, um, can't remember his first name, last name Rosen, uh, who I guess is either manager or owner of the new haunted house going in, uh, just on the edge of Glenwood on Green Street, which turns into Ives Avenue. And, uh, he was asking about requesting to close a road, um, in the county, and what kind of that process is. I tried to gather some information from him, uh, kinda told him, we don't, we don't do a lot of road closures, especially just for private entities. And, but look into it, discuss it with you guys too. They want to close Ives Road on Fridays and Saturday evenings for this haunted house. Kinda, in talking to him, it sounded like the reason they want to close it is because they're, they want to park people on Ives Avenue to the east from, from the city limits. I told him, well, there's no parking on, on gravel roads either, and he said, well, there's no signage, well, it's Iowa code three twenty-one. The only way it would be legal is if they left enough width between their car and the driving surface to allow for a clear, uh, clear pathway. So that would be very hard to do, I even talked to sheriff about it, and he said, yeah, that's not allowed to park. Uh, and also would cause thirteen residents on Ives Avenue to have a two-plus mile detour to get into town, if they wanted to go their shorter route. And it's also the only access from the east to the state school, which is a twenty-four hour campus for those residents. And it's, uh, only access to critical, uh, county infrastructure, there's a tower there on access or given access right off Ives Road, so.
There's a lot of state.
A lot of, a lot of things going against it. It is a popular road for whatever reason, for those state employees to, to head down Ives, get to Highway thirty-four, that's just. I was gonna formally tell them no, but I wanted to let you guys know about it first.
We totally discussed this the other night at the P and C board for almost an hour. And it, it's gonna be tough, and it's, one of the board's members said, well, let them go ahead and have it and see where the people are gonna park, where they're gonna land. You know, they thought about taking people by shuttle from the Plaza, sit on the Park Road, parking around the square, square and stuff, but then you have the problem of how many people can you put on the shuttle at a time? Is it gonna be feasible, how many shuttle would you have to, you know, uh, so Eric's not happy with it, but he says it's a business, they, they want to come here, they want to do this, we'll work around it, I guess.
But the city, I, I attended the first meeting, there's three orders, uh, colors, I attended the first meeting over there, and they had discussed issues with the parking up behind Amphitheater at one level, they Xed out going up the terraces near the tower and stuff like that, anywhere on that, that road. But, and then the issue with parking lot down Parkway Road, and that's why I surprised when you mentioned that they now are targeting, the city's not, or is reluctant to allow them on the park property uh, because they had to have an access to the back end of Park Place, they're, they showed a diagram at that meeting I was at that at some point when Park Place was operational actively, there was, had been some informal agreement being made between the city slash park board and the Park Place owners, of some sort of a sidewalk connection with that drive that goes up behind Amphitheater, you know, off the Park Road, it goes up there to the, above the Amphitheater area of going, that would come off that road down into the Park Place property, which is now owned by these gentlemen. So that their residents that were able could walk up and enter the park, you know, under assistance, you know, stuff like that, uh, instead of having to transport down another way to get it, but that never came to reality, no sidewalk, but they did indicate on the mapping, they showed and the city kinda agreed, there was somebody that remembered that, but it just never came to fruition that, that it was gonna happen. So they were looking at that angle, if the city would allow them to park in those common areas, and they said they take responsibility for the safety. Uh, there is some lighting up there in that area, you know, they have some poles lighting because of the amphitheater, but they'd have to have staff out there for security and safety to protect property and vandalism and things of that nature, so I, I think the property owners in Ives would be concerned, not only accessibility, but security. I for one, you know, you're parking all along Ives Road, you don't know who will take advantage of that to break in the various properties that might look like no one was home. So I think that's a risk, uh, and again, I think you're gonna have people parking on Green Street no matter what you do. But the way they have people coming into this facility to get their tickets, and they explained, is kinda backwards, so it doesn't make sense to park on Green Street or anywhere in that area to where they have to come in, there are a lot of them come in the front door, and they're having to come in one way and go the other way to enter the attraction. There's two different tickets here, enter attraction around the corner somewhere else, so it's a problem due to location, and, and the alternative is to come to the county and say, well, let's leave the road and they'll give up Green Street. I don't think they can handle that, just visualize what Green Street would look like, both sides of the street had parking on there every which way, both directions. And, uh, who would manage, how'd you manage that?
The city's got an issue there, I, I would say no parking on Ives.
No, we're not gonna close that road.
It's a narrow enough road and.
And it's not, not even allowed through Iowa code, so.
There's a lot of workers coming in and out of there to the resource center that you're just asking for an accident.
But I wanted, wanted to bring it to you guys' attention, just in case you hear more about it. Other general discussion I have, heads up, I think we did post this on our Facebook page, try to let the public know, we're gonna do some seal coat reclamation starting, uh, next week. We'll be grinding up one hundred ninety-fifth street south of Lambert Avenue. That first mile down to K Creek, which got beat up by, uh, by the Army Corps of Engineers. And, and then we'll also grind one hundred ninety-fifth street south of Paddock Avenue, which was tore up by flood two thousand nineteen. We'll also be reclaiming H twelve from, uh, Silver City Highway, just north of Silver City east to Brothers, it makes an S curve, so once it gets to Brothers, so that's about four miles.
It was that high dollar red rock that we put on there, it was supposed to last forever.
Now that sets until about a year or so before you can read that. What about the piece off of, uh, two twenty-first and Kesterson, are you gonna redo that eventually?
So, we were gonna do that this year when we oversealed throughout the county, um, early summer. We held off because the Army Corps told us they were gonna continue hauling out of K Creek, so, so yeah, we'll as long as, uh, we hear that the corps is not gonna be hauling on there, we'll, we'll get that next, next summer as well. Um, the only one other thing I had, I'll probably be bringing a resolution. Um, the only one other thing I had, I'll probably be bringing a resolution to you guys in the near future. Um, for a speed limit on Lambert, Lambert Avenue coming into Malvern from the east. Currently. Uh. We don't have a step down in speed limit. From fifty-five to the city has posted. I wanna say twenty. Um, inside city limits. They've had issues with vehicles, uh. Running through a T intersection, um, at the corner of Lambert and their first pedestrian street. We're, we're hoping gain some, some more motor attend, motorist attention. We'll put some red flags on there to make it a little more noticeable and we'll step it down from fifty-five to thirty-five, um, at city limits. Be prepared to see that. Otherwise, that's all I have. Anything for me? Get out of here.
I don't have anything for you, Cory. I'm gonna tell Jill that's her. She's up next.
No problem.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Larry.
We have to do this every year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, Baumgars, uh, we had to go for Bungee, but we don't anymore. Ain't there another one, aggravation, or no, they're done?
They're done. I don't think we give it to anybody else.
I don't think we have. And Baumgars should be about done.
Yeah.
And we're just abating the city side, I don't think we're, I don't think we're doing any of ours.
We don't get any of it anyway, we just have to abate it. Yeah.
We should get some rural services, I don't know, I would think.
I thought they brought that in. The city.
They did, it is in the city limits, but I thought we still got some rural service. Money out of them.
There might have been a little. How you holding up there, we doing okay?
Jill.
Hi.
You're up, you're up, you're on deck.
I'm on deck, okay.
You're, you're actually up to bat, I should say, no, you're not on deck.
No.
Actually, you can sit Carol's chair if you want to, she's not here. Uh. We losing money again?
Yep, it's the last year for Baumgars.
I knew we were getting out of the name grid.
Yep, we're down to the nitty gritty on them. And, um, this year it is, um, twenty percent. And so, uh. It made a difference of. I think it was like eleven thousand dollars or something. Yeah, it dropped from fifty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-two for the year down to forty-five thousand seven hundred and six dollars for the year. And like I said, this will be the last year that we will be abating taxes for them.
For the city.
Mm-hmm.
Did, did we get any tax in, income off of that?
Yeah, they, they.
For rural services here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I'm pretty sure it, well, yes, I, yeah, it's all, uh. It's all down below there. But then when I redo it, it'll make those numbers a little bit less because it'll drop it by eleven thousand and something, so, okay?
Thank you.
You are welcome.
You get your scraps?
No, I will make a motion to. Approve resolution twenty days thirty-four to abate taxes for the fifth generation investments. Otherwise known as Baumgart.
I will second that motion, is there any discussion? Last year, you said?
Last year.
Perfect.
This time it's only twenty percent.
Yep. Okay, hearing none of those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
If I need this one, Lani, this is the official one.
Use the colored one. He didn't use Larry's, Larry's paper either, that's them stuff.
Oh, sorry. I'm trying to save money.
They always tell when he brings one in. Thank you, thank you.
Do you sign on behalf of Carol today, or do you want, is Carol going to be back?
Lori's been doing those, yeah, we had a couple of other things that she had to attach to.
I will take that into her then and, uh, have her get it signed, okay?
Thank you, Jill.
You are welcome. And we are getting a lot of tax money in, people are paying for it full year, it's.
You didn't send, I didn't get a bill for Joel's place.
It probably is coming under us, is it in, under your name or actually under his name?
No, it's under mine, mine and Barb's.
Okay, I'll check and see if it's.
Check and see, not that I, you know. But I don't, I don't wanna. Be delinquent, but you know, it'd be, you know, if you're gonna bill me for it, do it now at once, don't, uh.
Yeah, okay. Well, I thought they did pretty good, I got this stuff on a Monday, Christine and I proofread it from home on, on Monday night, we sent it to the printers on Tuesday. And they had it mailed on Wednesday, so that could be part of the, I mean. We were late, very late, and every customer reminds me that they've had everybody else's a good two weeks ago. I hear that almost every customer and I just smile.
There you go.
Through my mask.
Happy day.
With my eyes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jill. All right, guys, we got some general discussion time, I'm assuming you're all together. Where are you?
I'm Ted McElw.
Hey Ted.
Thank you for coming, by the way, you better. Phil Coats and Phil Coats.
Yeah. I'd like to get, did you get those for visitors, yeah, could you guys at least sign in, then we can at least list you on the. Social security number, bank accounts is all we need, so.
Thanks for letting this come out, by the way.
Sure, 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 thanks for coming in, come in anytime. There's no formal action we can take, we're just listening to you and, yes, yep, yep.
What else do you need on this, that's all? That's it?
Yeah, just the names.
What can I, what can I need your, your last name, Carl? Right, I knew that. Yes. Um, all right, well, again, thank you for letting me come in and talk.
Sure.
Um, so I, I think, I'm guessing you've all seen the email that I sent out last week?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's your address, Ted?
Uh, five two, five two two. Two hundred and thirtieth street, there you go. So I have, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, I, I just have some data that I'd like to share.
Sure.
And then we, I, you know, hopefully we can discuss it and just go over there. Um, so, uh. Again, the spreadsheet that I created and I sent out to all of you, I, I have a copy of it, you can't read it, but it's on the shelf microscope. Um. So the spreadsheet I, I created shows how assessments in different parts of the county vary with respect to market value. Based on what I'm seeing, I, I looked at homes in Mineola, Silver City, Glenwood, Lake Ohana specifically. Uh, homes that have sold in the last few years. And we're specifically looking at, uh. The percentage of theirs, or basically the percentage of their sales price to market value or to their, or to their assessment. Uh, and what I found.
Price to assessment.
Yes. And what I've found out is that, at least what it looks like to me, is that homes throughout Malvern are assessed at about eighty percent of their market value. Uh, homes in. Glenwood are eighty-eight percent, homes in Silver City are eighty-eight percent. And homes in Lake Ohana are at about a hundred and five percent.
And where are you getting these market values from?
The, all publicly available data.
To, to sales?
That is sales price, I'm equating market value to sales price, recent sales prices. Uh, which is correct, right, I mean, that's how we, that's how we do it, right, market value is just tied to, to sales price.
If they go back for sales in two thousand eighteen are the sales we have to look at.
Okay.
Not nineteen's, we have to look at two thousand eighteen's. If there's not enough, the state will go back to two seventeen.
Okay, that's good, because there's a lot of examples that I pulled out of sales in two thousand eighteen. Um, so, so it will be, and there's plenty of evidence in two thousand eighteen to, to make my point, I think. So, um. If we, if we are assessing properties throughout the county at different, uh. Different percentages of market value, and one group is gonna end up paying a higher percentage of the sales price than they otherwise should have to pay. Is, is that, can we agree on that?
Um. Could I just add that it's where the sales are at in the county?
Mm-hmm.
And your sales in Silver City are lower than the sales in Malvern. And Oak and.
All, all that is a hundred percent true, and I don't, I don't, I'm not arguing that, what I'm arguing about is, is the ratio of the assessment to sales prices, that's all I care about in this argument. I'm looking at homes, what they're settling for and what they're assessed at, that's all that I care about. Um, so I have four specific examples, so we can get into the details a little bit. Here are two homes in Mal, every one of these may have an individual explanation, I don't know. Uh, but I sat here all weekend and I could come up with these all day. Uh, so here's two homes in Malvern. One of them is assessed at fifty-two percent of its sales price and the other one is at ninety-seven percent of its sales price. That doesn't, I, and again, I don't expect you to have ready answers for all of these, but that to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Absolutely, I will leave them with you. Um, and I, I've actually already emailed them specifically.
And, and, and just not one example, that may or may not have anything to do with what you have, but you, you've got some homes in Malvern and Glenwood, but. A lot of them in Malvern now are getting re, uh, remodeled, you know, they're, they're. I don't wanna say falling down, but they're in need. So, so they're going in and fixing them and the house has been assessed from, I'm gonna make a number up at forty thousand dollars a year and then someone will spend thirty or forty grand on it and they'll sell it for a hundred, a hundred and fifty, so. It, it, it does take some time to catch up, but that's, that's just one.
This home sold in two thousand eighteen. Okay, it sold for a hundred and seventeen five and it's assessed at sixty-one thousand dollars. That doesn't make sense to me. Uh. So you said that we're using sales prices from twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen.
Okay, and this home sold in twenty eighteen and it's assessed at fifty-two percent of its sales price. Okay, again, I don't expect specific answers on these, I would like, I would appreciate some answers down the road.
Sure.
Um, so here's my house compared with a house right up the road and can you, did you, I don't know who's controlling, can we scroll down just a little bit? Cause I wanna show everybody. So. These are the two houses in question. This is my house right here. And the other house is right here, I believe. So they're just a hop skip down the road.
Is that Bailey? Is that the one you're talking to on this one?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure, oh, yep, it is, it is.
Okay, let me just show you this and it won't be on Beacon, it'll be in our Vanguard system. Okay. If I could, here's, here is Bailey's house. And it was built in two fifteen. Yours was built in two thousand four. It is, when we assess, we go back several years. You know, first year might be a foundation, the next year might be framing, we go clear back until we get decks. His house is now assessed at four seventy-two nine eight eight. And your house is four forty-three six twenty-eight. Once we got all the improvements on it. Now he. As you will see, and I think you know.
You can hear.
As, as you can see, it sold for four hundred and eighty-five thousand.
You don't take that chair right there.
We are still, we are still low on assessments.
Okay, that's fair, but what I wanna say is that I, I don't. I, I understand that you may fix this in the future, but that doesn't change things right now, okay? This home specifically, uh, anyways, the, the, these two homes, the other home is. Eleven years newer, it is four hundred square foot larger. It is, um, what else was it? It is eleven years newer, four hundred square foot larger, it's on one acre more land and it's sold for seventy thousand more dollars. And it is assessed right now, and I, I understand that that's gonna change in the future, but it is assessed right now at forty thousand dollars less than my house. Okay, I, they're paying six hundred dollars less in property tax than I am. That, uh, that does not make sense to me, now, the same house, so I, I hear what you're saying, it's gonna change in the future, that same house sold in two thousand and sixteen for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Okay, that same house sold four years ago. And it's still assessed below that four hundred and fifteen thousand. So I don't have a lot of, like, what I think is that our assessments are taking far too long to catch up, I, I can appreciate this. But I still have a hard time understanding how that assess, or that, that home specifically is assessed below its two thousand sixteen sales price.
And it, it does take a while for us to catch up, I do get that.
Four years, four years, I'm not, I don't think I'm comfortable with four years, that doesn't seem to be fair.
Now, we do reappraisals every ten years to get into homes. And that might seem like a long time, but reappraisals are very expensive, we can't do them more often.
Okay, so let's, I, I don't want, I don't wanna get in the weeds, I just wanna get through these examples and then I'd like to have a, a discussion. So here's two homes in Lake Ohana, they're right next to each other, if we can, uh. These two homes right here, they are virtually identical, built by the same builder. By the same, I mean, everything is virtually identical on those homes, they are mirror images of one another. They are assessed within a thousand dollars of one another, which would seem to make sense, I mean, uh, that's what you would expect. But when you look at it, one of those homes has a finished basement, it has an extra nine hundred square foot of finished space. They were both built in eighteen, or I'm sorry, one's in seventeen, one's in eighteen. So again, why is, why, I mean, somebody's either getting way undercharged or way overcharged. In this case, because one of them literally has almost fifty percent more house than his neighbor, and I know basement isn't exactly a one for one, but. Still, I don't understand how two homes that are virtually identical, where one has a finished basement, can have the same, same assessment. And be paying the same taxes. Uh, and then. Two more examples for, for homes that, uh. For more evidence that our assessments are taking far too long to catch up. Uh, here are two homes, one's in Silver City, one's in Malvern. Uh, this home right here just sold in twenty twenty for four hundred and fifty-five thousand. But it sold in sixteen for four hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's assessed at four ten. So again, it's, it's below its twenty sixteen sales price. This home sold for two fifteen in twenty nineteen, it sold for a hundred and eighty-four thousand and seventeen. And it's assessed at one seventy-two. So I don't, so I don't understand why there's so many homes that are not assessed at, at, at this point. Sales prices that should, or market values that should be included. When virtually every single home in Lake Ohana is impacted within a year. So. I, I, I sent this out in my spreadsheet. My house is the very, very, very first house. And I printed, there, there's two things on this page I wanna highlight. There are a group of comps, the first section is a group of comps to my home throughout the county. And this yellow column is the percentage of basically the assessment percentage to sales price. And as you can see, one of those homes is way higher than the others. And they're all comparable, they're all single story homes, they're all, you know, varying square footage, but they're, they're all similar. So I don't understand why my house is assessed at a hundred and seven percent of market value when everybody else on average is at about ninety percent. And, and. The thing, it, it, it does seem to be a problem that specifically affects Lake Ohana, because here's five other homes in the area that have sold. Within, look at that, eighteen, seventeen, twenty, nineteen, twenty. If, if this logic that it takes two years to include everything is true, why do all these homes, why are they updated like that? Why are they updated immediately? Why are all these homes assessed above their market value? That doesn't make sense to me.
How, how do you know they're assessed above market?
Because I know what their sales prices are, and again, sales prices equate to market value, but that's, you, you said. Iowa's a market value state, meaning valuations are based on past sales. Those are your words, so I, I thought, to me, that means. The sales price sets the market value, that's how we determine what a market value of property is.
Now, when we talk about sale prices and when we go back and these are all sent to the state, the Department of Revenue. So all of them go through the Department of Revenue. And some sales we have thrown out, some sales they use, we don't have enough, we go back another year. They have to be good sales, they can't, you know, they can't be foreclosures, all that.
All, all these are good sales, I believe, I'm gonna give you a chance and I would like you to have, I would like you to present specific arguments. Or specific explanations as to why these issues exist, because they don't look fair, do they look fair to you guys?
No.
Do they look fair to you, Carl?
No, I got a different approach completely.
Um. So what, what I'm asking and the reason I came here today, I, I have one goal. I just want this body, specifically the Board of Supervisors, to acknowledge that there might be some inconsistencies with our assessments throughout the county. And I'm not, I'm not asking you to say that. And I'm not sa- I'm not asking you to say there are. I'm asking you to acknowledge there might.
I would have to hear a lot more than, than, than what we're going to accomplish today, but, but I don't know how to answer that.
And we can look into each one, if you want to come down to my office and look into each one, we can see if they're on the sales that has gone to the department. And all of these sales that go to the department and they're put on an abstract and through the state, so it's not just me.
I, I understand, and I, we keep deflecting here. I don't, I'm, I understand there's a process. What I'm telling you is that something's broken in it. I don't know what it is. So, or, let's go with Malvern, hold on. Five homes in Malvern, five homes that have sold in the last couple of years. Sales price one fifty, assessed at one seventeen, assessed at one eighty. Uh, I'm sorry, sold for one eighty, assessed at one sixty-eight, sold for two fifteen, assessed at one seventy-two, sold for one fifty-five, assessed at a hundred. Sold for two ninety-two, assessed at two forty-two. These homes in Malvern are habitually below market value and homes outside and specifically in our neighborhood are assessed above market value. And that's what I want an answer to specifically. And it's not just one or two homes. It's all over the place. I've spent, I've spent, I've spent days on this. I've been looking. I could sit here and come up with example after example. I just picked the most egregious ones. And I understand that you did not spend the week in doing that, I, I imagine.
Right, right.
But we could do that. We could do it all week. Uh, and I don't understand it. I just want homes to be assessed equitably. I don't mind paying my fair share, but I don't want to subsidize people in Malvern. That's not fair. I don't want to use, "it's not fair." I'm not, I'm not a petulant child. That's not how it should work. It should be equitable.
I have a, I have a question I think maybe you should look into, being you're digging deep into this, as to what you're assessed on taxes. You have your school.
Yep.
Okay, we have a school. We have a jail here in the Glenwood Community School District. We have a new, uh, sports facility. Uh, if you live in Oak Township, you are the highest priced taxed township in the county due to the fire department stuff in, in Mineola. Whereas you take into consideration in Malvern. I don't believe they have much of a school debt. Yes, they have the, the jail, but they don't, they don't have a, a athletic facility, things like that, it's been taxed to them, so. The assessed value to me, and what you're saying is, when I look at this in Malvern, I look at it as a buyer's or seller's market. If I'm, if I'm priced at fifty-five thousand, I can settle for a hundred more. Who cares? I mean, uh, the assessed value, this house may be a fixer-upper. And somebody's willing to give this price for it?
The assessed value is the market value. That's what it's supposed to be. So, that argument holds, like, I hear what you're saying, but then Glenwood still, overall, is sitting at about eighty-six percent of their market value.
It's been that way for, because of the, of the vicinity of council blocks and, and Omaha, the people coming down here and wanting into this.
Glenwood is at eighty-six percent of their market value, Lake Ohana's at a hundred and five percent of their market value.
People want to buy out there. What, what?
You, you're, that is an irrelevant point, sir. That is an irrelevant point. We're talking about percentage of market value, that's it. Okay, I don't care that homes in Lake Ohana are worth more than homes in Malvern. Yes, of course they are. We're talking about their assessments as a percentage of their market value. Homes in Glenwood and Malvern are below their market value, ours are above. I'm paying a thousand to fifteen hundred more than I probably should be. That is, that is a ballpark guess.
Are you talking taxes? Are, are you talking taxes or assessment value?
They are, they are inextricably linked ma'am. They are absolutely inextricably linked. My taxes, your taxes, your taxes went up this year because your assessments went through the roof and other people's didn't. That is a fact. Like, you can go, oh, they, they went up, just not as much. Ours went up fifteen percent. And, and that's.
When's the last time we, I, when's the last time Vanguard went through and did our reservations?
Eleven.
So they're due.
That's why we approved the reappraisal, right?
So they will be caught up again here in the next year when we start?
When we start doing the reappraisal and that takes a while to get through the homes.
Why then, okay, like, why then are all of our assessments up fifteen percent and nobody else is? Like, again, homes in Glenwood have increased in value significantly. Why have my taxes gone up thirty-seven percent? And Mr. Crouch's have gone up twenty-four percent? Why is that? Lonnie, why have your taxes gone up thirty-seven percent and his only got up twenty-four percent?
Mr. Crouch's egg.
I'm sorry, say again?
Mr. Crouch's agricultural.
Uh, nope, nope, his house right here is residential, right? I've got it right here. We get, we pulled the address.
What's the address?
I'm sorry, and if this is not your house, I apologize. This is twenty-five, seven, fifty-four Irish?
My son's house.
Okay, fair enough. I, I, I put on here, I didn't know. I have no way of knowing whose house is what. But the point still remains, why does his house? The point is still valid whether or not it's yours or, or, or your son's. Why, why does his house, why does, why are his taxes only up twenty-four percent and Lonnie's are up thirty-seven percent?
And it's, this, this area, it's the area that you live in. And, you know, I understand that we're going through these, but with the process, you came to the Board of Review.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was the process for these taxes that we're paying now.
You keep saying it's the area. You keep saying it's the area. What about this home that is five houses from mine that is still assessed below its two thousand and sixteen value? It's not the area. It's not. Like, I don't know what else I can show you other than, like, that's a perfect example. And it's not up here right now, so I'm just pointing at nothing. But there's a house five away from mine that is still assessed below its two thousand and sixteen sales price. That doesn't make sense. If, if it's the area. If it's the area, everybody would be impacted. And they're not.
So, can we get back to, when you petitioned, the, the Board of Supervisors are not the correct entity to come to? It's the Board of Review.
Are they? In fact, you told me when we talked last week, you report to a conference board, correct?
I do.
That, that in part, in part is overseen by this board, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then they are a part of it. They are a part of it. Them, the school board and the mayors of the various communities, right?
But for valuations, it's the Board of Review.
They, though, you, uh, report to the conference board, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What I'm saying is that this is broken. This is broken and something is not right. And as, as part of the entity that she reports to, all I want you to do is acknowledge it and please work with us to figure out what the problem is and fix it as soon as reasonably possible. Is, is that reasonable?
So you're saying every township is taxed differently in, in the county, right?
Correct. Correct. That is correct. And like this last increase, Henderson and Hastings did not get an increase because they do not have the sales that shows the increase. But in Oak Township, it went up fifteen percent. It is a high selling area.
So does, uh, how far does the Glenwood School reach out? Does Malvern kids go to Glenwood? Do they go to East Smalls or? There's open enrollment. You get a little bit here and there. Okay, so I guess you need to know how far out Glenwood School goes to, whether those people should be taxed at that rate. I mean, that's to my opin- opinion of it.
They're not that far off. I, I've looked. I have the whole thing. I mean, uh, school district is seventy-five percent of the budget. The county is about twenty percent of the budget. Feel free to correct me if I'm off here. And everything else is like five percent. So the school district is the number, I mean, the, absolutely the overriding factor here.
Right.
Okay. So which means, anybody that goes to Glenwood should be, I mean, basically the same as we are, right? The same, and, and they are pretty much.
That's what I was getting at.
They are pretty much. So this is really a market value issue. Now, with my, the thing is, I did challenge my assessment.
Yes, let's talk about that.
This to me is irrelevant as well. I gave up because my house isn't actually assessed horribly unfairly. Well, horribly incorrectly. It is pretty close to my market value and yours probably is too.
As was mine. We talked about that yesterday.
But nobody else's is. Nobody is obviously a big word. Very, 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 or, many, many, many of them are assessed well below their market value. That's the problem. And that's why you're going to pay hundreds, if not thousands, more this year, this year than you should.
Now, I'd like to just make one comment. It's a different take for me completely. I'm retired. I'm on a fixed income. And, uh, I know that's nobody's fault here, but, and I don't think my house is over assessed value. If anything, I hope it's worth more than what you have as assessed value. My problem is, in the last four years, my taxes went up thirty-five percent. It's went up every single year, even the year the assessed value didn't go up and the mill levy went down, my taxes went up. And there's nothing to prove to me that that's not contin- going to continue. And I just cannot afford a thirty-five percent increase every four years. It's, and an increase every year. I have never had a year where the taxes didn't go up. I, I don't understand the justification. If my assessed value stayed the same and the mill levy went down, why did my taxes go up?
I can't speak to taxes.
Like I said, I just want to make a statement because I'm done. I've already put the house on the market. I just can't afford that kind of increase. And I am shocked that Mills County expenses go up anywhere close to that thirty-five percent in four years. But like I say, I'm done. Uh, I don't have an obligation to stay here. I moved to Mills County from Pot County because the taxes were so bad. And I protested them, so I'm not going to do that again. It's a waste of time. I'm just telling you that you need to look at what you're doing to the senior citizens in this county. Because you're going to force them out. You can't, you can't handle that kind of increase every year. So like I said, I just want to make statements. You need to look at what you're doing to people. Cause I'm not going to protest my taxes. I'm moving. You know, I just can't afford this environment every year, year after year after year. So, I just want you to think about that. How it impacts people. So, like I said, I'm not, my taxes are fair, assessed value. But the tax increase every year is just unbelievable. It's way outpacing anywhere else. You know, uh, I can't imagine any county that you can show me has had a thirty-five percent increase in their budget in the last four years.
Well, they haven't, of course. Well, cause our budget hasn't increased that much. Our taxes are going up while Malverns are down.
Anyway, that's all I wanted to say is, hey, I'm not going to fight it. I'm leaving. So.
Sorry to hear that.
So, moving forward, yes, I want specific answers to, to these four questions. But that is not going to solve the problem. Like, I need you, I, I'm, I'm desperately asking you three specifically as part of the board that she reports to, to look into this problem, uh, to look in to see if there's a problem. And then if there is, to take action on behalf of us to fix the problem. Because I believe there is. I believe there's a significant problem.
Can we keep these?
Absolutely. And I, I, uh, I, again, everything is in that spreadsheet as well. But yes, you can keep them. So. No, that's it. I believe I've taken up enough of your time. Do you guys have anything else to add?
No, it's just like his taxes have went up. And I'm planning on building out there too. And when I saw what his are going up, really questioned is whether I want to do it. And I think every lot out there, I think a lot of people are looking at that tax, what it is. I think everything would be sold out there.
That's why they came out there.
And bring you more.
Because they are cheaper than council blocks and that's why I came out there. I moved from council blocks. Same deal.
But not now.
No, but I'm ready to sell too. I'm just like he is. I can't continue to, you know, just keep paying taxes. Pretty soon you're taxing them out of our houses. And people, if they don't understand, there's something wrong with people.
Speaking correctly, for instance, the increase we got this year was mostly mandated by the state, correct? Well, that's a Vanguard deal. Vanguard, they sent everybody around and everybody's goes up just because of one.
Vanguard around since eleven, she said, so it's, it's been, they're, they're going to be coming around soon.
I will say leaving here, this should be noticed. This, this right here should be noticed by somebody other than me, okay? And I, I don't understand why, why it's not. Th- these things, like, you should not have, and I, I know I got to leave you guys. You should not have homes that are assessed at a hundred and seven percent of market value if there's other homes at eighty percent of market value. That is preposterous. Like, we, we've got to get it fixed. So please, and I'm going to follow up via email. Uh, I would like specific answers and please, I would like you, 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 the entity, the Board of Supervisors to say, to acknowledge, I don't know if you can, I know you can't communicate as a group, I don't think. That's what I was told. Like, I would like an email from you, Mr. Mayberry, just to say, like, to give me your final thoughts on it. In like, take two weeks, take three weeks. But I'd like to know what your position is and if you're planning on trying to do something about it. And if so, what that's going to be. Is that fair? Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming in.
Yep. How long would you like to address those four questions?
I can look at them today. I emailed you. Does that work?
It does work and I'll give you till the end of the week if I don't hear. Just in case you need some, some extra time. I, I am a reasonable person. I just want somebody to look into it. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. We'll get those guys. Don't worry about it.
Alright.
Have a good day.